You're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, we are ready to go live. And then before we begin the meeting, I do want to say that as for Assembly Bill two, four, four, nine, we do have a trustee joining us remotely this reason, this evening for just emergency calls. Camila, I would just need you to state the purpose for your emergency calls. You don't need to explain any details. Just a reason why you're joining remotely.
A medical event or a reason?
Okay. You could state if there are any adults in the room with you?
Nope, just an eight-year-old.
Okay, thank you.
What a weird and invasive process.
I know.
It's so fun.
Your hand on your heart.
Yeah, exactly. So strange. Okay, are we ready?
Yes.
So then I will call us to order at five oh five P M. and start with the land acknowledgement. The Altadena Library District acknowledges its presence on the traditional ancestral and unceded land of the Gaberlinotanga peoples. Altadena is located on the stolen homelands of the Hahamanga Tribal Band. The traditional territory of the Gaberlinotanga is referred to as Tavangar, which includes the areas currently known as the Los Angeles County, Riverside County, West San Bernardino County, parts of Orange County, as well as the four Southern Channel Islands. Entities such as the U.S. government and non-native settlers have subjected the Gaberlinotanga peoples to historic and continuing injustices, including genocide, forced displacement, and cultural and linguistic erasure. Altadena Library commits to learning, educating, and informing its staff and residents of present-day Altadena about the rich histories, vibrant communities, and culture of the Gaberlinotanga people, present and past through our collection development, resources, and program offerings. Okay. So I will now do a roll call for attendance. And I can't see anyone, so I'm gonna just go trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Lim.
Here.
Trustee Andrews.
Here.
Trustee Capell. Not here. Okay.
Excuse.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any reordering of any agenda items? Right? Okay, good. Then can I get a motion for adoption of the agenda as it is?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
I. Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items?
There is none.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we will move to the approval of the consent calendar. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I vote to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
I. Excellent, thank you. Okay. And there are no items can remove from the consent calendar, so we'll move on to department updates and special presentation. We have a special presentation today regarding the diversity audit presentation. So I will turn it over to whomever is going to be doing that presentation.
So I'm taking this off the presentation on the diversity audit of the adult collection. The team is comprised of our assistant director, Ashley Watts, our Adult Services Manager, Danielle Guerrero, our Innovations Librarian, Erin Kimbrel, and myself, Dana Long, even Family Services Manager. So I'm really actually excited to talk about the diversity audit because it's been on our operational plan for a couple of years. And I'm happy to report that we completed the audit earlier this year. So during the presentation, I'll go through the project and what was involved. We'll review some of the data and share the collection strategy this year. This was our first diversity audit of the adult collection and then attemptless assess the diversity and the representation of the collection and take that information to create collection plans and train staff and how to like preserve the diverse titles and also focus on purchasing of more inclusive materials. So I'll begin with just a little background on the timeline of the project. Right? And then I'll just give you an idea of how we got there today. And we started in March twenty twenty-two. Like true librarians, like the first step was to learn and research. So a few of the staff enrolled into this free session workshop that would like to help create an enjoyable and affordable collection. And one segment of it included how to plan and conduct their own audit. So after we came together after we completed the course in April, from April to July, we worked together on developing a plan and like discussing like what kind of tool to use to collect the data. At that point, the team had discussed and decided to audit the entire collection because we've never done one. So that included fiction, all the Dewey's, mysteries, graphic novels, et cetera. And so this is like a pretty important few months we spent developing the audit tool. The audit tool, we used a Microsoft Form, so the staff would be pulling in as they audited each title, like populating and collecting on Excel. So we tried to, we audited her specific diversity markers, which included race, R G B, T Q I A plus, disability, family structures, culture, and religion, and our diversity. So we were looking pretty deep into each title. And so we worked on this plan for several months in August, December, we finally unveiled the plan to the A S team, the Adult Services team. We introduced them to the plan, some feedback, made some tweaks to the tool. We trained them and made sure they knew which section they are responsible for auditing. And then so, so they would be prepared for October when we actually launched. In October, staff started. We tracked the time each week to see how it intersected with desk duties as well. At the end of each month, everyone logged a certain amount of numbers. And we could see how, how much time was devoted to those projects. So about six or seven months in May, June, we reviewed the process, assessed like all the progress. We, we determined that we needed to adopt like a new strategy. We got a lot of feedback from staff because it wasn't moving as fast as we wanted to to collect, to do the entire collection. That was pretty ambitious of us. And so we took the feedback from the staff on how to move the project log. And some of the major things that we did to rebound the project was first, that was like, we're gonna be closing the building soon. Why are we auditing titles that possibly probably wouldn't exist in Warner in our collection? So we also, we combined a reading and auditing schedule, a very aggressive one into like four to six, six months. And then instead of auditing the entire collection, we only took a ten percent random sample each section. We also learned that due to like the variety and the number of like diversity markers we were looking to auditing, each person was like taking seven to nine, ten minutes to audit one title. So we really scaled down to focus on only several markers instead. So we chose to do by P O C, L G B, T Q I A plus, visibility, mirror diversions, mental health, and culture and religion. And also what was really holding staff up was the auditing tool that we're using. We're using Microsoft Form and they were given a list of all the titles that needed to be audited. So they had to move back and forth from those different applications. So we simplified that and we only Excel and combined the list with the, with the diversity markers. And then we also trained that on using only three types of different sources to audit, audit each title. So it's more of like a cursory, cursory review of each title. So we, they were instructed to look at the cover, subject headings on catalog, and then use a question literature. So in July twenty twenty-three is when we took the new strategy and the leading and combine, combine, combined reading and auditing camp and the new tool and started, started auditing again. And that really worked because in four short months, we completed the reading. And then in February, December, we completed reading in February twenty twenty-four, we completed the audit. In March and April, that was not too long ago, the current team, we evaluated the data. We also took another course from Library Journal again on how conducting audits. But this focus this time, we really focused on the topic of like the next steps of auditing and what to do with the information. And then present time, this is, oop, did you go forward, Camila? So this is what the tool that we use, it's basically an Excel file on the left-hand side. Those are the titles that the random ten percent of titles that they're auditing. There's author and the other columns are the markers that we were auditing for. It's just that it looked like it made it a lot faster to work through. And any questions about time management process before we move towards data review?
I have a question. So did you guys have to invent this tool sort of on your own? Was there, like, I know you said you went to a training, but it sounds like you had to kind of make up the tool to do it at all. Is that not something that people are doing? Or are you guys like on the cutting edge of?
The first tool that we, we were using was adapted. Maybe that's why it was so like ambitious. There were so many markers that they're, they're looking for. And so we simplified it. And there are some that are even simpler than this, but our team really wants to see all these different diversity. So we, we all chose like nice.
Those are two huge projects to do, like just the actual audit, but then the invention of the process to do it is, yeah. So that's amazing. How did you generate a ten percent selection? Was it something that?
We use our library management system, Koha, and then we generate a portion of the number of books and then we data randomly.
Okay, great.
So Erin, I have a question.
Yes.
Is this not crazy?
Well, I, I'm just kind of shocked. Like, is there no I S P N database lookup with like keywords that is available at all?
Oh, it's like an automated tool?
Yes.
From my question and our, and our research on this, there are some tools available. But I can't remember the fitness. I think they're quite expensive and they're, they have to purchase it from a vendor and it ties into your.
So like, you know, like Goodreads or Google Books doesn't just have an A P I that you can, and this, this is just shocking. Because this is like, this is a tremendous amount of work, right? And then you guys scale to one ten because it's really a tremendous amount of work. And it becomes in kind of like an individual thing almost, where you have four or five different people who are trained. But really, maybe your initial ten-minute read might yield a different result. Or, you know, maybe something is missed. There's maybe an error bar associated with it too, I guess.
That's always a possibility, but this was a very like quick scan, like very apparent diversity.
Yeah, for the categories, right? The six to eleven. Yeah, it's just kind of shocking to me, I guess.
I think as the library industry develops further, there will be a greater selection of tools that will enable more libraries to accomplish this task.
Right.
I think I do believe that the method we used ended up being quite usable after the first iteration.
Right.
Something that enabled us, enabled us to, to create this kind of
Yeah.
baseline to work, work towards.
Yeah, I guess is another thing, like you guys are in the prime realm of large language learning models, A I. This is a chat G P T thing. Like, I, I'm curious as to whether Chat G P T could have told you. And I'm curious, is this is a thing, like, you know, pick a book, right? And then ask it the six questions, whether you're gonna provide.
Yeah, I think that's like, that would be interesting.
Experiment. Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm shocked, like, who knows to you guys?
Forward, but like in March twenty twenty-two, when they, when we took
Yes, yeah.
That initial training, A I, and like all those things were not really
Yeah.
options they were giving us.
Yeah. No, this is, this is, this is one work.
Are the category markers, the diversity categories, are they, did you differentiate, I guess, between content and author in the sense that if it's like a black author, it counts in one kind of way? Or if it's content that's representing, yeah, interesting.
The, the results don't show that, that difference. This was all recorded as, for example, the author was a black author, it would, it would get the same mark as if it was.
Okay, so there's not, yeah, so the data doesn't break down into content versus differentiation. Okay, okay. Yeah, but it's a high-level characteristic. I can, I can.
Well, and it's almost like if this is occurring, I'm like, I don't know, seventy, sixty other libraries within our area too. It's almost like this database is up down, right? So we should be sharing it or we should be understanding how this is purposeful in the future as well. This is, this is.
That would be another strategy to developing tools, I think, all the libraries to do this.
Yeah.
Crowds or something, yes.
Practices that can be shared, yeah, sort of. Right, I'm gonna, I have, for my second, I'm gonna go over the.
Can I ask a question? Can you hear me? Okay, sorry. So real quick, I, I may have missed it. So this, for this, on the current screen, it says graphic novel audit list. So you all did ten percent of each category of, of, of the collection?
Yeah, so each, each collection's ten percent of that section or like ten percent of fiction, ten percent of graphic novels. So it wasn't
Okay.
red, it's the entire collection. So we wanted to make sure it represented each section as it's still red. So we didn't want to have the chance of a random selection of the whole collection stand in for each category. And also with, by having each category, it's gonna help us create sections, it's gonna help us target our next steps.
Okay. And then in your section that you were just about to go into, are you gonna share what you are, I guess extrapolating from the results of the, of the, you know, the ten percent of the different sections? And maybe, I may be jumping the gun.
That'll be the third section.
Okay.
Section, we're gonna overview of the kind of the results overall and then section by section.
Okay, go for it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So overall, this is twenty-eight percent of all of the books that were audited had some kind of diversity present either in confident or authorship across all of these categories. So basically, if that, all the titles, if they had a checkbox in any of those rows, it would count as having diversity. That's what this number is showing us. So twenty-eight percent of all the sampled items had some diversity. And we'll go into, this is just showing us section by section, the diversity percentage in each of those sections. And one quick reminder of.
And you remind us, let's say, yeah, I don't remember.
Reference books. Well, now there's the psychology, self-help books, two hundreds is religion, three hundreds is helping out.
It's like family, family dynamics and structure.
Sociology. Four hundreds is languages. So foreign language as well as initial language usage. Five hundreds is
Math.
Science. Six hundreds is applied sciences, like, like includes cooking, cookbooks.
Gardening, medicine.
Seven hundreds is arts, like hobbies and things like that. Eight hundreds is literature, poetry. Nine hundreds is history. It also, nine hundreds also includes viruses, but in our library, separate virus reviews from other nine hundreds. So nine hundreds is history. It's also travel. Fiction is fiction. And then the other ones are more or less straightforward genres of fiction, like mystery and science fiction. And the large types of collection and Spanish language books are also helpful as a whole.
How come we don't separate out like romance as a genre if we do science fiction?
The, we don't separate them out in our, in our displays. So these are the ways they are categorized in our catalogs.
Right, yeah, okay.
So on that note, are they, are those books, are they just categorized under fiction?
Yes.
Yes.
Interesting, okay.
So this is, I'm gonna show you the percentages. So that original overall diversity by, by section or genre. So you can see like the highlight is like the two hundreds have, which kind of makes sense. It's a religion. So there's a big diversity of religion books. And the smallest, I think, is seven hundreds, which was like arts, crafts, hobbies.
On the, on the religion one, was, that was a diversity category? So how are you, how are you categorizing like the norm versus what counts as representative of diversity? You know what I mean? Like, if you've got, the two hundreds are all just about religion, like, does everything get a checkbox? Or like, how did that, how did you make those determinations?
I think we just did it if it even mentioned it, which, I mean,
Um, I mean, it wasn't like a predominant one as well, so we focused on like ones that are not predominant.
So what does that mean though, right? Like, is that, like, if it was like the history of Christianity, you know, two hundred to eight hundred A D? No, history of Judaism, two hundred to eight hundred A D, yes? Like, how did you?
We did not have that kind of criteria, criteria. I think they only were instructed to look if it was even mentioned. If religion was mentioned at all.
At all.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Or the author or whatever.
Okay.
Right, then for the next slide. So then this, the next group of slides will be breaking, like showing you information on each of the categories that we audited for. So we can see the longer, the overall line is the, the, the number of items that was sampled. And the smaller yellow portion is those that have this, each category's particular diversity.
Sorry, it says two things. Is the blue bar the sample size, the ten percent? Or is it the size of the collection?
Yeah, what is the sample size?
Okay.
Had diverse representation.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
So we can see one of our, obviously our largest section is fiction. That's you know, not the greatest, probably.
Yeah.
And then another view on the next slide, each one will have like this bar graph. And the next slide is similar, like which, which categories had the higher percentage. I. The next one. I can also mention that we do have, this, we have these available printed out. Do we already have? So for, for, it's gonna hit the highlights, but we, we've got this so you can take it more detail, but for yourselves. Science fiction very high in this category. For samples.
Man, that's not right.
Yeah, not very, not very strong representation of disability really in almost any section. Next slide. The highest would be science fiction at twenty-one percent. Physical, the diversity representation.
Thank you so much.
Being full selection, you have to go forward until you're talking about data. That's why we'll have by. The picture should not be such a big, big circle, but. Oh, yeah.
What is mental health diversity? Like, what are the characteristics for?
I'm gonna kiss that a little bit.
Yeah, sorry. I'm asking like questions that are probably mostly about the tool, but it's super interesting.
We can talk about anything that was written for.
And obviously, a category like that was more about the content than we could evaluate on author. Whereas by more books that are for author, even if.
Yeah, unless it would have mentioned author, the author's relationship with mental health issue. It would be almost exclusively about.
Sure, of course, yeah.
Which also makes, just like my question, you wouldn't necessarily expect like a cookbook to mention authors. Full health.
Sure.
Yeah, nor the virgin, again, very. So that's overall. Simple. A lot of theories in this bubble there. And science fiction, yeah, but a, but a verse. Ultimately. And I was gonna talk about steps for audit and for.
So as Erin mentioned, it's an opportunity for us to increase diversity. So, but we are met with an interesting challenge right now because we're also, due to the remodel, tasked with reducing our collection due to having to store all of these items as well. So taking that into consideration, our goal to realistically achieve is to increase diversity by five percent per section in the overall collection, and this should be accomplished by May twenty twenty-five. And given that we will also be reading such a large part of the collection, it's a very realistic goal. So something like, for example, in looking at the overall diversity in sci-fi, with sixty-eight titles of the sampling were diverse. Our goal would be to increase it five percent, so that's seventy-two. But we are specifically going to be focusing on acquisition because we are going to be reading so many books. We have to focus on acquisitions. We'll be looking at those markers when we make our purchases. However, conversely, when we read, we will also be keeping, prioritizing, preserving diverse titles. So we'll try to be very balanced in the way that we approach this task. In order to accomplish this, however, we will have to retrain staff on recognizing and prioritizing diversity. What does it mean? What are these markers? How do we identify them? We have a lot of new staff as well, so being able to pull them into this as well will be very important so that we can all move forward. So the exact workflows are still in the process. I'm currently developing, developing them right now. What we did last time is we took each section and we gave the reading goals. So we'll also give diversity goals per title, per section, so that we can all be looking at these as a individual section, which will increase the overall diversity of our collection. But we need to be realistic. Right now, the majority of our purchases happen to Baker and Taylor. Um but we need to be realistic, right now the majority of our purchases happen to Baker and Taylor. Um and they do have a pretty good uh diverse collection, they also have subject headings that identify books that are um of diverse um. Nature, having said that, we can also widen who we work with, so we will be working with and connecting with new vendors. And we're getting a new vendor partnership, so we have already identified a few that we might be working with and we need to reach out with and connect with. But there's also local bookstore that can be represented in this as well. Um so um we will be looking to um really tap into that um if we do this. And as I mentioned, um twenty twenty five, May of twenty twenty five is what our goal is to accomplish this. This is gonna be a mighty task for staff, but I think it's very important to be representative of our community and to increase the diversity in our collection. So if we're very deliberate, and we will be, this can be accomplished, um so I'm very confident that we will accomplish this by by May. Any questions?
I have several questions.
Yeah.
Um five percent per section, is that five percent of the size of the total collection? So like all six thousand fiction titles, five percent of six thousand or five percent of a six hundred?
Oh, of the actually of the diverse titles, so we have our number of diverse titles and we want to increase those number of diverse titles by five percent.
Okay, but the you would have to multiply by ten, right? Because if you're taking a random sampling. And you're saying we've got sixty eight titles in this ten percent, wouldn't it be six hundred and eighty of the total?
I'll break down the math. Looking at the five percent. I'll break it down. Yeah, I see what you're saying, though.
Yeah, cuz it was a sampling. Right, exactly, cuz otherwise it would be way less than five percent of the collection be five percent of a sample. My other question, and this is obviously outside the scope of this project, which is very ambitious and very cool. Do you guys have any sense of, or is there a way to know what the um? Sort of distribution of diverse titles looks like in the online resource catalog? Like I think about, you know, this is obviously about the physical collection. But thinking about what we have available through cloud library or through other other formats, is there any any way to measure that? Or is, would you have to like invent a whole nother?
Interesting thing, um a question, I'd have to see what cloud library offers in regards to tools. Like Erin's mentioning, mentioning a lot of our vendors have tools.
Yeah.
The unique um. Challenge that would come with cloud library um is that those titles um timeout. So generally, we have them for twenty six checkouts or fifty two checkouts or one year or two years. Um so it's never um as, I mean, our collection is always static. Uh it's not static, excuse me, but that one's like really not static. It's always gonna be turning over and depending on the number of checkouts, like if I check it up, I return it early in the new check it out, you might have just. Hit that fifty two or twenty six checkout, so it will be really difficult to um really capture a snapshot of where we are in regards to diversity. I'm not saying it's impossible, but it would be very um of the moment.
No, totally, that makes that makes sense.
But i- it is important to note that we should probably be looking at uh with an eye to diversity while we do our collection development in our ebook as well. And cloud library does provide a few lists that we can work off of just to start with, that's.
You know, diverse authors or different voices or whatever, so I'm imagining that's in there.
And we can fill that into our gap training and workflow, so that's a great recommendation.
I just have one thing that I just thought of during that, I think it also would be interesting if we take a look at industry wide and publishing. What those percentages might be. Data that's already out there, I would imagine.
I'm sure that's true. I'm sure that's true. It would also be interesting to know, I mean. Kind of how that changes by date, right? Like if you've got a collection that's like, most of these publication dates are nineteen seventy eight to nineteen ninety five. Versus something that is much more kind of of the moment, we might expect to see some sort of shift in representation there as well. That's really cool. This feels like an article you guys should publish. I'm super serious, like this. I think you do, I think that, yeah, like here are the challenges, here's what we did, here's what we tried, here's how we iterated. I feel like it's it's something that you guys have really been super thoughtful about.
I came in halfway, so you know, definitely Diana, Ashley and Erin get most of the credit, but um but definitely. And implementing it in a way that feels um realistic um with all the other challenges of reading, so which is its own challenge as well.
It'd be interesting to look at featured initiative purchases as its own subset. To see what the diversity representation, not necessarily separating by genre, by fiction, by nonfiction, but just as its own category. How does that stack up? Because I'd be curious to know. Are people looking for things we don't have and what categories are those and how is that stacked up against our existing collection? Any other questions?
Yes. Um so again, this is a, forgive me if I missed it. When you act, when you're using the tool, uh cuz it, I'm wondering about the, I guess, margin for. Person error, so like are you, how are you, are you pulling the books off the shelf and like reading the dust jacket? Or is it only um? Uh uh electronic or are you using, you know, what's online about the book or about the piece or the collection? So I missed, I I don't know if I heard that part and like how are you actually determining? Um this, you know, I know Katie, you asked about like if it is written by a BIPOC author versus the content. But then if you don't know anything about, you know, the author or whatnot, like let's say the mental health piece, right? How are you looking at the book to see if their mental health piece is included in it?
Yeah. You want to enter?
Oh, so um our staff is like instructed to check three different like um references. So first they did look at the cover of the book, you can see that on our um our OPAC. Or they can do like a Snap Cop on Amazon. And then they're also using our catalog and looking at those subject headings. And they also reference um like a a literature, um professional literature, like reviews of books that are published. Those in Kirkus Reviews, School Library Journal, and what are some other ones, um Publishers Weekly?
Okay, and then what, I know that you said that the exact workflows are currently being developed, but going back to. Training staff to recognize and prioritize diversity, do you have ideas on what that might look like?
Yeah, for staff training right now is just really to um remind them of what the markers are, how do we like review the books? How do we check them? What are we checking for? Um and then talk about the tools and how to identify them when we doing, for example, in Baker and Taylor, how would you identify a book? What would you be, where would you be able to tell? What are the award lists that we should be looking at? What are the, you know, things like that that come up? So to make those tools and resources available will be part of the training as well.
And there are published lists that we should take a look at, I know when um. Like Native American books was like a big deal, there's someone that like identifies. And like publishes a a list every year of titles libraries should have, if we're really gonna represent. So like just training them to go to those places when ordering for those collections.
And then I had a comment mostly about the the scope of categories. You know, which is just complimentary, like I think that the scope of categories that you looked at was really diverse in of itself. So that was really cool in terms of like mental health, LGBTQ, you know, those are, you know, really great. You know, I wouldn't have thought about, you know, thinking of mental health, you know, from a diversity audit perspective. So I think that that's really uh impressive, I would say, or just great. And then my last question is, where do you get the, like, where does the five percent per section come from? Is that like a recommended, you know, um? Uh you know, from the, you know, the whoever did the training, that staff receive, like where does the increasing by five percent? Like where does that number, that target come from?
It was just a collective goal, we actually had it at ten percent. The more we talked about it and talked about also like the reading numbers. As we get more and more firm on what those numbers need to be, we just didn't want to overwhelm staff. We're trying to do. The high numbers, so five percent just felt right for us. So yeah, just a collective goal we came up with.
Okay, cool.
Can I ask one more question about um acquisition targeting? So is there any kind of, is there any kind of weighting that is related to like community representation? So for example, I'm I'm imagining we may not have like a super robust collection of like titles that represent. People from Malaysia, stories from Malaysia, we also don't have a large Malaysian community in Al Sadeena, like is there a way to kind of not? Not create a hierarchy? I'm sorry, I, you know, like I was a poor example, probably, but like you could, you could pick any group of of folks, right? Pick any demographic element as a way of slicing and dicing that data, is there a way to kind of think about? If you've got, you know, the option, what are you doing? How are you making those choices? Is there any kind of decision matrix or is it just vibes or yeah? How how are you thinking about that or is that a conversation you're having?
From what I I know with any of our selectors, um. I don't know, it's something to think about, but no, we're not actively.
Yeah.
Talking about breaking it down.
Right, cuz I think you could take two separate approaches, right? You could say we want to be as broad as possible. And we want to have as much sort of s- broad scope as possible. Or we want to like specialize, we want to go deep in sort of these particular areas because they feel relevant for whatever reason.
Yeah.
But it might be something to think about, like both I think are valid strategies, you know, but I don't think you could do both, right? You kind of have to make an decision about one or the other.
Any additional questions or comments? That was really interesting. And I kind of geeked out on the data, so thank you. All right, um okay, so we will move on to our department update reports. Um do anyone have any questions or comments about the different department updates and reports that we read? Okay. Let's, we'll move on then to um item five, beginning with support groups. Say it again? Oh yeah, there were no reports, got it. Alright, so then we'll move on to administrative updates.
Okay, good evening, plus these staff and our many watchers online, I'm sure. Um I never tonight. One time I'll try and do a little bit of my report. Um so in terms of staffing, after three years dedicated service. Um Heather Fonda resigned her position as our part-time Youth and Family Services Library Assistant. Um she actually graduated with her MLIS in May and was hired by Glendale Library Arts and Culture as a youth services librarian. So I guess we let them steal one back. So we wish her well, she did really amazing work for us and had some big shoes to fill. Um on a side note with that, uh we did host the position for library assistant for Youth and Family Services. Conducted first round interviews last week, this week.
This week.
This week, and we'll be doing a second round of interviews next week and look forward to bringing on another staff member for childrens. Who do so many programs, they definitely need staff to help with that. In terms of onboarding, um we had the great pleasure of welcoming Sophia Aguilar to the Adult Services Team this month. Interestingly, she was in the process of being brought on as a volunteer by California. And applied for the position and was chosen, she's actually getting her MLIS right now through Syracuse University. With a focus on public librarianship and new services and started with this July first. So she's been with us a full month now, crazy. Uh we are also very excited to introduce everyone to our new staff accountant, G Con. I think I'm the most excited event, but everyone's excited, who started with us on Monday, July eighth. Um she's worked in finance in the fields of nonprofit and real estate, most recently with the global treasury team of one of the largest humanitarian aid organizations. Huge budget, I can't remember what you said. She's completely hit the ground running, taking over payroll, accounts payable, digitization, banking. And all the other things that we need to clean up in administration, you want to say a few words, G?
No, it's just um very nice to meet you all, I'm very excited to be here, um everyone's just been so welcoming and um. There's great systems in place and I'm just on the ground running, trying to learn all the current processes. And looking for ways to always improve the processes that we currently have and be mindful of the move next year. We just want to be able to ensure that business stays um smooth. And um that there are no hiccups along the way during the construction when our office is closed, so. We're going, yeah, yeah, things are good, so nice to meet you all.
Yeah, and really like even within these first few weeks, um have identified ways to cut out paper as much as we possibly can. So that we're doing electronic approvals and never have to print out the paper to start with, which cleans up the whole process with audit and how we file everything. So and less boxes to store, so yay, welcome, G. Um so with marketing, Bryn just really highlighted in the report all that's going on with summer reading program. It's been crazy, like the, with the lunch at the library program, um. They were able to schedule some really interesting programs, including um an aquarium on wheels, a build the teddy bear program. So like the word has gotten out and we've had hundreds of people attending the program, so. Kudos to Bryn and her intern, she was able to hire a marketing intern this summer, Reagan, who has been amazing and given her a lot of help. Um so really happy to have her on board as well. So in the last about month, I attended both the California Special District Association General Manager Summit in Anaheim. And then a couple days later, went down to San Diego for um the American Library Association Conference. Both were educational and fun, I provided information in the report if you want to take a look. But I have to say, it actually feels like conferences are really back, like before this, they were sort of um reduced. Versions of themselves, so I'm really grateful to the board for always continuing to support professional development for myself and the staff as a whole. Um I did make a little note about the fiscal year has begun. Um I did want to thank the board for um your support of the staff in some of these fiscal changes, like the three percent cola, increasing um what we're contributing for health. Um I've I've received positive feedback, so thank you for making those changes to the budget. Um Ashley did report on our summer twenty twenty four and as of July nineteenth, we have seven hundred thirty one registered patrons. Uh two hundred and twenty five challenge completions and almost two hundred and five thousand minutes of reading. Yeah, so very popular program and like I said, it could, every program we offer is very well attended. Um ALD also celebrated Juneteenth in a variety of ways just over a month ago. Thank you to Ashley and the public services staff for identifying ways to recognize that holiday. Um Rotary con- summer concerts, we are again a gold sponsor of the concerts and they are in full swing. If you haven't been, I highly recommend, they have some really great bands up there every weekend on Saturday. Thank you to the staff that are there um representing the library district. And also thank you Camila for attending the sponsorship dinner, she went and accepted our certificate on our behalf. Um lastly, Ashley continues to collaborate with the Pasadena Early Child Childhood Hub Network. Um they rotate around from hub site to hub site, we are one of the hub sites. And in June was able to uh attend the meeting at Kids Space Museum. Uh we actually had lunch today with the director and his assistant director from Pasadena. And you know, the the Office of the Young Child is carrying on out of Jefferson. And I think really a great opportunity for us to collaborate with several different organizations across Pasadena. Um and let's see, happy birthday to Ashley, which was a long time ago, so. That includes my part, happy to answer any questions if I have.
Thank you, Nikki, any questions? All right. Thank you, of course, for all of the reports and as usual, pictures of all the great things that are going on. Sometimes I'm sad to read the reports because I'm like, I'm missing all of these things because I don't get to come out as much as I would like, so. Anyway, thank you. Let's move on to the Board of Trustees ad hoc committee reports and we can start with the Facilities Committee. Katie?
Yeah, thank you so much. So you've got our report in there. I thought I might spend just a couple of minutes tonight filling you all on, filling you in on where we are with our Sequo process for the main library, because this is like the big thing we're dealing with right now. So it sort of touched on in the report, but you don't, you're not getting the, you're not getting the inside scoop, so here's the deal. So when we started the planning process for both libraries, a big question was, how do we move through the sort of Sequo compliance process? And as you will recall, for the main library, we needed to do that and, excuse me, for Bob Lucas, we needed to do our Sequo compliance stuff. We also needed a conditional use permit because there were two items that triggered it because we expanded the footprint and because of a setback of when the building was originally built, it predated CUPs, so we needed one for Bob Lucas. You may recall that that process took forever. It was a giant headache. We learned a lot doing it, but it was a whole deal and it, you know, it set back our construction schedule by a fair amount. So as we are coming into the main library, we've been very mindful of this. We know we're going to need a CUP for the main library because again, the main library predates the CUP process. There just wasn't one because it didn't exist when the main library was built. And unlike for Bob Lucas, there are also some historical resource considerations. So SEQU was like, are you going to have an impact on the environment? Is there an impact on the historic character of the building? Are you gonna create a bunch of light and sound and annoyance for your neighbors, right? There are all kinds of things you have to ask. And for the main library, one of the big questions is, does this impact the historic character of the building? And the answer is obviously yes, like there are things we are going to do that are going to impact the character of the building. So as part of our process, we had done an initial review with one of our, one of our experts, Chambers Group, who had looked at all of this. They had made some recommendations. And as we've moved forward with the county, we've determined that LA County will be the lead agency on Sequo, which means that it's kind of up to them how the process goes. And that gave all of us a collective heart attack because we're like, that seems really bad for our construction schedule. So big shout out to Nikki and the rest of the, the Capitol Project Management team who have been like quite aggressively pursuing this. And we're, what we've learned now after our most recent meeting with the folks at the county is that we should have a determination from them, hopefully by mid-August, of what path we need to go down as we proceed through our CUP and Sequo process. So there are kind of three things that could happen. There could be a finding of no impact, that will not be relevant for us. Like, we are making an impact on the building, right? We're changing some of the facade, we're doing stuff. You can find a mitigated negative declaration where you're like, yeah, we're changing stuff, but basically it's fine, doesn't count, won't materially impact things. Or you could need to go through a full, what they call EIR, an environmental impact report process, where you say, yes, we're making these changes, here's why we're making them, here's the considerations we've got, there's a public review process. We feel very confident it's going to be either an MND or an EIR. We don't know which. Initially, the county was like, we think it's an MND, but we didn't want to get through the whole process and then find out later that it was an EIR because that takes like another whole year. So anyway, this is probably more than you ever wanted to know, but the point is we are trying to very, like very aggressively pursue the answers to these questions so that no matter what the outcome is, we can stay on our construction schedule. The most time-consuming option would be to do the full EIR process. That would probably take us into early spring of next year. We have done a lot of advanced work, if that's what needs to happen, so we feel pretty confident that we can stay as close to on track as possible. But just to let you guys know, like that's what's happening kind of in the background, those are the big questions that are giving us, you know, the most like sort of bandwidth around how we're gonna keep all of this on track and on budget. Everything at Bob Lucas is going great. They passed some inspections, it's looking good, they're pouring foundation, they're putting in rebar. We see pictures every week for the August report. We'll see if we can get some pictures in there for you guys as well, so you can see what it looks like. But yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I just wanted to kind of fill you in on, on that piece because it is, it is pretty important.
Thanks for being all over that, Katie. Katie, I think I have a question to ask you. You've covered it all.
All over. I know more about Sequo than I ever thought I would in my life, but. Yeah, it'll. Yeah, that's, that's true. It's a, it's a good learning process. We're learning a lot. But what we learned from Bob Lucas is we gotta be aggressive, be super aggressive about it because otherwise it will drag on and on and on. So, yep.
For Bob Lucas, they have pictures and you're getting pictures and there, is everything on track in terms of the timelines?
Is, yeah, everything is on track in terms of the timeline. Every Monday at our Facility Committee meeting, we kick off with an update from the, the, the folks from Puckabee who are doing the construction oversight. So there's somebody who's onsite every week, often multiple times per week, they're taking pictures, they're interfacing directly with our general contractor at Monet Construction to make sure that like everything is happening exactly according to the plans. If something gets missed, they go back, they make sure it gets fixed. So yeah, we're in good shape at Bob Lucas, everything is looking good.
Okay. And then for the, the Sequo and the CUP process, did you say if it is, is it on track to, I know you're being proactive, but to, to delay anything? Or are we still in good, overall good shape?
I wish I had a better answer to give you on that. My, my sense of everything, and Nikki, tell me what you think, but my sense of everything is that it's going to take at least six to nine months to get through this whole process. You know, like start to finish, to where we can kind of bid it out, so.
We, we've already talked to Chambers Group, which did our initial Sequo study. And like, we know how much work it will cost. We could flip the switch to start it now, so I think like, hopefully not. We think we're gonna end up half, I think we're gonna have to do an EIR, so we're just like trying to mitigate any delay by just saying, let's do it. So because the timeline she showed us on Monday, it takes about six months to do an EIR, but we've already done some of the initial work.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I probably could have been more accurate about that. Yeah, that's true. We've done like a lot of the initial steps. So I think, you know, if we can keep LA County on track, that's sort of the big, the big hiccup because as part of the EIR process, there are mandated like public comment periods. So it's like you file a piece of it and then members of public have 45 days to say something. And then you do the next piece and people have a, you know, another window. So at each stage, there are sort of these built-in, built-in pieces. My hope is that we can get, you know, we can get through an EIR process, we can get a CUP hearing scheduled with enough time to bid the project and then start construction. You know, when, as soon as Bob Lucas is done, that would, that would be ideal. We're pushing as hard as we can to make that happen. It's still a little early to know, just because again, LA County is going to get back to us on what they think the next steps forward. You know, what their determination is going to be. But I, yeah, I think we're gonna. Right now, we're okay.
We're hoping, because Jennifer did send it, if you already saw this, sorry, I missed it. Jennifer sent the report, the Chambers Group did, for us, that pretty much said they believed we'd have to do an EIR for our planner to review with the historical, you know, members of the team that haven't looked at our project yet.
Yeah.
So we're supposed to meet with him mid to late August. And I think we'll have a better sense of what's coming, and hopefully a potential timeline by the end of August. That's what I'm hoping, because
I agree.
Really hard to plan anything right now.
It's super, it's deeply frustrating. But yeah, so hopefully at the August meeting, maybe we'll have, we'll have better information for you then about what that looks like. We are gonna, I don't know, go to these people's houses and make the answer, they're going to tell us, but we just can't sit back and be like, oh, I hope it works out, so we're we're trying to, we're trying to push it as much as we can to get, to get at least an answer, like. Yeah, we're good to go, whatever the process is.
And it's, like you said, a great benefit that you've been through, you know, parts of this already with the Bob Lucas, so you have great lessons learned.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Katie? Okay. We'll move on to the Government Liaison Report. That's you, Trustee Andrews. Such a complex report. Thank you, in advance.
Yeah, I did, muted to be, I tried to do a little tone here, so sorry about that. But it is about two items that we've talked about before. One is the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. And the other is about a, the program for libraries, I'm sorry, for, for while I get to it in a couple of minutes here to talk about, but first I'd like to talk about the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. And that was a proposal back in 2022 that was called Initiative 1935 that would determine how local taxes would be raised and spent. And the initiative was organized by California Special District Association, which, you know what, actually I'm just kind of, I think I'd just like to ask questions, answer any questions you might have about this, I'll give you that.
Yeah, so basically, this act was about wanting to remove the ability to have a special funding ballot, right? Is that correct?
Right.
And it sounds like it's kind of crushed and burned, right? Is it done, done, or is it, okay?
If they want to take it to the next level, they can, but the California Supreme Court did not get
Yeah.
So they could technically bring it back in the future, but
Sure.
It seems like it's probably going to get knocked down quite a lot if they want to bring it back, so.
They called it unconstitutional on their decision.
Yep, perfect. Okay. Most good news.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then where you, did you want to, you say you were going to talk about the, was it the parks passes one?
Yeah, there was, my notes got messed up here, but there was about a $9.1 million expenditure for the California State Library for lunch, not lunch, but for parking passes and entry passes for net for state parks. That was taken away in the last budget, but when they redid the budget, they reinstated 6.8 million, so 9.9 million left, 1 million left, but 6.8 million came back for that program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we shall move into, if there are no other questions for the reports, we'll move into new business, since we don't have any unfinished business. And the first piece of new business is review and approval of the special tax lien rate for 2425. And who will be presenting on this?
That'll be me, Camila.
Hello.
All right. All right, so this is just our annual resolution that we need to bring to the board that sets the special tax lien rate. Also known as Measure Z, that we need to file the resolution with the county so they know how to bill the residents on the property taxes this year. So just as a reminder, we still currently have Measure A, which was the parcel tax that was passed in 2014. That will still be a separate tax. You guys filed, we filed that resolution back in June. The reason we had to wait to file this one is because we're filing it by parcel tax rates and we had to see what the numbers would be before we could set the budget. What we're collecting with this special tax lien is enough money to make the debt service payment to the bondholders for the bonds that we cashed out in 2022. So of course, we worked with NBS, our special tax assessment firm, as well as our accountant, Kristy Even, to establish that budget for this next fiscal year to be $1,297,230.20. So taking that number, that includes administrative costs and builds in delinquencies, which we left out the first year. And taking that full budget and dividing it based on square footage of single-family homes, apartments, and then commercial real estate. There's a, you can see in, in the report, the rates this coming year. Interestingly, and I think it might be because there's actually more parcels, it was, so it was divided a little bit more across the board. The rate actually went down a tiny bit. Last year, it was .051 cents per square foot. This coming year, it will be .050, so five cents per square foot even for us to collect enough to make that debt service payment. We did bring this information to the Community Facilities District Committee back on July 22nd. And they did review it, asked questions. We had Charmaine from NBS and Kristy Even there to answer questions that the committee may have. They unanimously voted to approve or recommend to the full board that you approve these rates for the next year. And just as a reminder, next year, it's going to look different because this is the last year of Measure A. So next year, we'll, we'll be building a budget to not only make the debt service payment, but also cover that basically four of our budget that we're collecting with the parcel tax. That's not this year, but next year it's going to look a little different. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
So we added 24 parcels in Alcatina. That's interesting.
I don't know where.
Yeah, like, right, exactly. Where, where are those? That's right. It's crazy that it makes that big a difference with that small a number of parcels added. Yeah, but yeah, okay.
That's, that's what Doug Cauliflower asked during the meeting. He's one of the members of the committee. Where all those come from?
Where are they? Yeah.
None of us can answer the question.
That's so interesting.
When you say parcels, what does that mean? Like, property?
Yeah, so like if you've got, like whatever, like if you're, like if you have a single-family home on a on whatever land you own, let's say you like split your lot and you sold half of it, that would be technically a new parcel. Even if it's not, you know, like new, a new house or whatever, so, yeah, it's just that piece of real estate, but I don't, yeah, I don't know where those 24 parcels are, so maybe they, yeah, maybe they subdivided stuff, maybe.
Yeah, that's my, they subdivided, you know, existing lots.
That's my guess too.
It also makes the order.
Yeah, because I saw a situation where an ADU sold, they had done a lot split, and the ADU sold, and then they sold the main residence, which is weird. But like for a lot, like the ADU sold for like a ridiculously high amount. And then they sold the green residence for quite a bit more too, so yeah.
Our real estate agent in the room, are ADUs, can they be considered a separate parcel or no?
They can be.
Yeah.
There's some new laws that are coming out where the yeah, it can get complicated, but they're visually making it into essentially the ADU can be considered a condo.
Wow.
Technically makes sense if you think that like, we had one issue come up in the past where a woman had two parcels. Only get an exemption on the first, like the parcel you live in. So like if you're renting it, it could potentially be a separate property.
Yeah, you know, that's interesting.
Okay, and these are, again, they're single fam, like, they're not like apartment buildings and things like that.
Well, if you look on page 43, or I mean, 42, which has the table, there's a flat rate for apartments and for commercial property that's under 10,000 square feet and over 10,000 square feet. So the square footage is only single-family homes. That's how it gets divided.
Any additional questions on this matter? Okay, then can I get a motion to approve, approve the special tax lien rate for 202425?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on to item B, review and approval of the RFP for janitorial services. Is that going to be you, Dan, Daniel?
I'm so sorry, this is a point of order. I don't mean to be this. Well, I just think we have the wrong motion, right? Like, don't we need to approve Resolution 2024-03?
I think you better read it.
Yeah, I think we better, we better have the language in there just in case. So yeah, so I'm, yeah, I move that we approve Resolution 2024- So yeah, so I'm, yeah, I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero three.
Okay. Is there a second?
All second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, thank you, Katie. Okay, then now we'll go to item B, for the, uh, R F P for janitorial services.
Yeah, so we've been using Verde for three years now, uh, for, for their contracts. Uh, their time is up, so it's time to put out the new R F P looking for a new janitorial service company, uh, this time around. I believe I've seen there's only two companies that apply, but, uh, I'm gonna be actively be looking for more uh, companies that we get, expecting more companies to choose from. Um, that will be the main goal and build a position and have it start, uh, approximately October first.
Need discussion or questions?
Um, can I just have a quick question, Daniel?
Sure.
So you mentioned in your report that it's an expanded scope of services. Um, could you just talk a little bit about what that is?
Yeah, I think we got, with this time around, I got a lot more detail when I wrote it up. Uh, the first time around, or last time, uh, it was very, uh, basic what, what was written in the R F P. This time around, I got a really, a lot more detailed into what, uh, the bathrooms specifically will need. Uh, and then kind of a breakdown of every room, uh, in this library. And essentially pointed out what I think would, uh, be needed to make this place shine. So it is a lot more detailed.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I was like, you're cleaning the bathrooms. Here's the things you've gotta do. I thought that was great. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, oh, go for it.
Yeah, so, uh, did the legal, our legal services also look over this R F P already? And like, uh, has, has any of our, the language of the the professional services agreement changed?
So the, this is a template we use for all requests for proposals, which was drafted in coordination with our firm. And then they also helped us write the V S A.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was it. Thanks, Camille.
Thank you. Um, all right, then can we get a motion to approve the R F P for janitorial services?
So move.
Seconded.
All in favor? Great, thank you. Next we have review and approval of the mid-year operational plan update. Is this an action item or it's a, it's an action item?
Order is informational. It shouldn't be listed here as action, so you don't need to take action tonight. And it's just really view of our mid-year. I should have caught that when I was reviewing the agenda, but this is just informational. So, been doing since the beginning of twenty twenty, uh, we bring to the board in December each year, the operational plan for that next calendar year. Um, the board did approve our operational plan on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, again, we focus on our three strategic priorities from our strategic plan, which are we are curious, we are connected to the air neighbors. Um, so as you can see in your packet, we provided a status update for all of those objectives that, um, the managers and staff identified to accomplish this year. Um, some of the highlights so far that I thought I'd mention are our ongoing professional development and training of all staff, including individual development plans, virtual niche academy, as well as our project-ready curriculum. And that includes, you know, staff that have been here a long time, as well as every, all the new staff that have joined us. Um, also creation of an audit tool, um, evaluating our partnerships and programs. Um, also ahead of schedule, the launch of our early child, childhood literacy collections and training, including a relaunch of our Thousand Books Before Kindergarten program. Uh, expansion of our sustainable practices in collaboration with the California State Library and some of the grants that they've given us, as well as other local groups and organizations such as La Petite, which has helped us bring in, um, more bilingual story times, um, by language. Uh, we officially launched, didn't quite say it or make it in the packet, but the curiosity connection volume two is on the road. Yay! We've also done focused outreach to expand our footprint throughout the community with pop-up programs and events, um, throughout town, including adding a tool lending library at one of our partner organization or businesses' plant materials. And then, of course, this is many of the objectives, but kind of wrapping it into one, we're continuing to promote information about the building projects. Hold meetings as necessary, be weekly with our facilities committee to ensure both projects are moving forward in hopefully a timely manner. Um, including identification of an alternate site and analyzing our staffing models as we get closer to closing the library. So as usual, lots going on, um, but that, those are some of the highlights I thought I'd point out. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from folks? Thank you so much, Nikki, for updating us on the operational plan. All right, then we'll move on to review and approval of the Christmas Tree Lane, is it association? The A?
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, early closure date change from December fourteenth to December seventh.
All right, so, um, this one's very minor. As you know, we published the closure schedule, um, towards the end of the previous calendar year. Um, we had it listed on the closure schedule as December fourteenth, because historically the lighting festival has always been on the second Saturday of December. We close at two o'clock, just as a reminder, because they pretty much use our parking lot and set up everything here. Um, well, uh, we were approached or somehow Ashley found out, I think, um, through some of her work with the chamber, that they're now gonna be doing it the first Saturday, after request from the community to have the lights on longer.
Oh, that's nice.
So, um, the lighting festival will take place on the summer seventh, so we're just asking the board to approve the change to close at two o'clock on the seventh rather than the fourteenth.
Okay, can we get a motion to do so if there are no objections?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Excellent, thank you. Okay, then we have review and approval of the library closure on August ninth for the purposes of emergency repairs to the H fact system. Do we need, uh, go ahead.
All right. Uh, we have a refrigerant leak. And, uh, so they have to bring the entire line of, of the refrigerant to see where the leak is coming from. That process takes a long time to flush everything out. And then from there, they have to put in some other liquid to determine, they're able to find out where the leak is actually coming from. That entire process, right to station takes a day. While that happens, the H V A C system, the ace, the air conditioner cannot be running. So it will be completely off for the entire building. So, as it's going to be very hot.
Yeah.
And, uh, the library temperature will get to a point where it just doesn't, it wouldn't be right for patrons here, while the, while the system is off. The goal is to find a leak and then the next day, fix where the leak is. Uh, the next day, while the leak is being repaired, it can, the H V A system can run at about a fifty percent capacity. Uh, can anticipate probably it'll be about seventy-six to seventy degrees in here, which we think is good enough to have the library back open on Sunday. But that Friday, it will probably.
So hypothetically, if it's variable on Saturday, like can we just close the library?
Yeah, I just have to call, I just have to call Camila, let her know that we need an emergency close.
Okay.
So make her aware, but. And it's why, um, you know, you would, you would think logically, we do it on a Sunday while we're closed. But then Monday, which is our long day, would be at fifty percent. You know, so in Fridays, seems like they're not as busy of a day. So we felt like this was probably a better way to go, and it gives them the weekend to make the real big repair, and then we're back in business on Monday.
Yeah.
So what, I, I didn't hear you very clearly, Boomba, were you asking like if necessary, what, what would need to be done to, if we had to still stay closed on that Saturday?
Yeah, that, that was my question, and Nikki said that you can do the emergency.
Yeah.
Got it. What day are we talking here? Okay. August tenth, okay. Um, all right, then if there are no other, is no more discussion or questions about that, can we get a motion to approve the library closure on August ninth?
I move that we, we do the August ninth, as you just talked in a second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, we shall move on to governance and the twenty twenty-four elections update. Is that you, Catalina?
That is me. Um, I'll, I'll make this brief since the board and the public is, um, is aware. But I just like to, as we get closer to the nomination filing date, which is, um, very soon, it's August ninth. I just wanted to provide one last update. Um, so the library, um, our marketing specialists, Bryn Waltz, sent out a postcard to everyone in the community of Altamena that, uh, went out the week of July seventeen. Um, so it gave information out about our new districting process, also the three seats that are up for one, two, and five. Um, and then also, um, the upcoming election two years from now for twenty twenty-six. So I did just wanna briefly share my screen, so if anybody was interested, they could actually see the process and where the board election page is. Um, I just wanna do a quick demonstration of that. So this is the board elections page, and if the public is interested and they're not entirely sure where their district is, if you scroll to about the middle of the page, there is this map here, you click on it. This map will come up, and all you have to do is put in your address. There we go, that's the right one. And it'll show you what district you are in. So, um, with all of our information about the elections is on, um, I have had people calling, um, and asking for more detailed information. I am referring them to the county offices, and I tested this out, they do answer the phone. So they are able to help you, and they're very nice. Um, and we have had some people file already, which is really exciting. So just wanted to put that up there, just a little update. Have any questions?
Just another plug to honestly do call the county, like they really will help you. They're very cool. Like, we talk, we throw some shade at L A County around here, myself included, but the, um, the elections office is great, and they will help you with filing, they'll help you with campaign finance. When you go in, they will walk you through the forms, so even if you don't know what you're doing, they will, they will help you figure it out, and it's not as intimidating as it looks like from the county website, just.
Yes, I will say that the county website is very intimidating, and that's why people call. Yeah, and I have to call the county myself, and that's how I kind of figured it out. Okay, this is what I need to do, so. Um, but yeah, the public is encouraged to call us as well. We're happy to answer questions.
And we should plug the video that Katie and Jason put together.
An actual excellent video here. Um, so the dates, and I made note of it, have all changed, of course. Um, but this is an extremely helpful video. It's invited into the page for people to take a watch. Get a whole civic lesson.
Yeah, I had to re-watch the video. And like take notes and write down instructions.
Yeah, I couldn't, yeah.
I have a master class there. You should work for the county.
I've also, I will say, I don't know if it is the districting process that we went through or just the the lovely mailer, but I've gotten several questions about, um, you know, I've had two conversations yesterday, had a really long conversation with someone who was, expressed some interest and have shared the video with them as well, sent them the link, like, you know, for tonight, like, watch the, watch the, the, the meeting and, and see, you know, how things are done. So it seems like, for whatever reason, that there is more interest is, than there has been in past years, so that's really great to see.
I, I've had the same experience, Camila. I think the mailer was super effective.
Yep.
So, props to Bryn for, for putting it together, to get it, get it out.
Well, I think that the other ones we're putting out are also.
Equally effective, yeah, I think that's right.
I didn't hear what you said, Nikki, sorry.
No, I was just saying, I think it's, it's good feedback to hear that that's how people are being reached, because we, we've been doing three or four a year. And I mean, it's, but like it does seem like the postcards are reaching people that we weren't reaching otherwise.
Yes. Definitely. Yeah, one person sent me a picture of it and says, should I do this? And I was like, yes. So I definitely think that it, those are effective all across the board. Okay, thank you, Catalina. Um, are there any announcements or under announcements and planning, is there any correspondence?
No.
Nope, okay. Any proposed future agenda items? Okay, I assume you said no. I didn't, I can't, I, the sound keeps going in and out a little bit. Um, all right.
One, I would like to make one announcement, though. We do have budget committee scheduled for next Thursday, um, August eighth at one o'clock. Um, because we did get the financial policies updated, we're gonna take those to the budget committee next week, so the two committee members, please plan on being here for those. Yeah, and then we'll plan to take those to the full board in August.
And that is on the eighth at one P M, right? I have it on my calendar. Okay. Got it. All right, then we have reached the close of our agenda. We were very efficient tonight. Do we need a motion for an adjournment? Or we can adjourn at six thirty-two P M? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good night. All righty, ciao.